Commissioner, Vice Chair Mohammed. Vice Chair Mohammed, are you ready to begin?
I call this regular planning meeting, Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:33. Please stand for the pledge.
At my allegiance, freedom of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicole, roll call please.
Yes. Vice Chair, Vice Chair Devett Mohammed.
Present.
Commissioner Eric Altman.
Present.
Appointed Commissioner Marilyn Avalon.
Present.
Appointed Commissioner Shelby Goss.
Present.
Appointed Commissioner Charles Plummer.
Present.
Youth Commissioner Ramadhi Jawanda.
Present.
And we'll go ahead and do the oath of office.
Okay, I'd like to call to the podium Appointed Commissioner Marilyn Avalon. And if you could please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I Marilyn Avalon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
For purpose of observation?
Evasion.
Evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you like to take photos? Please stand up at the front and.
Oh wait, thank you. You just have to have some heads, your phone is so bad.
And you can stand right here?
Sure.
And we'll take pictures.
Are you going to do the dogs?
Well, yes, I am. And then I will take one for our communications folks. Twenty-two.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to call Shelby Goss. Okay, I state your name.
I Shelby Goss.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll do one more for communications folks.
Oh, a good picture.
There. Fantastic. Thank you.
And finally, I'd like to call Charles Plummer to the podium. All right. I state your name.
I, Charles Plummer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon, about, about which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Director Cooper, can we take a picture with all of us?
Oh, ours, yes.
And the new committee members. I will now open up for public comment. This time is reserved for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that are not on the agenda and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. It is recommended that speakers limit their comments to three minutes each and is requested that no comments be made during this period on items on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the Planning Commission on items on the agenda should comment via email prior to the start of the meeting or to verbally comment on the item during the meeting. Click the raise your hand button if joining by Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone when the item is called. The Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the Planning Commission does not respond to public comment at this time. Speakers are asked to please speak clearly and provide their name. Any handouts for distribution to the Planning Commissions must be emailed by 3:00 PM on meeting day. I have Jermaine Dowdell.
Good evening. Big voice. My name is Jermaine Dowdell. I'm a journeyman carpenter representing local 751. Can you hear me? I want to speak to the importance of a livable wage, proper benefits, and hiring locally in apprenticeship. As a journeyman carpenter who has gone through the apprenticeship, I understand the training and the value of the union and union jobs. They have provided me and my family with the opportunity to have a home, healthcare, and a pathway to a successful future. Also, while in my career, I've been fortunate enough to work in my community, which is why I support hiring locally so much. I believe it not only gives a carpenter a sense of pride in their community, but also creates positive economic impact in their communities as well. So in closing, as we look to the future, supporting union work, local hiring will be essential for not only infrastructure, but for also opportunities for our future generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment in the room not related to the agenda? Nicole, are there any public comments on Zoom?
We do have Justin Holm with his hand raised. One moment, please. Justin, please unmute yourself. Justin, please unmute yourself and begin speaking. I can see that your mic is moving, Justin, but for some reason, we can't hear you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna text our IT department downstairs. Justin, hang on just one moment. Just bear with us for another moment, Justin. Justin, can you try speaking again, please? Hmm. Okay. Just bear with us. I have IT working on it. I apologize. Okay, this, this may take some time. Maybe we can come back to non-agendized comments later.
Okay.
Okay, Justin, we'll try and get back to you later while our IT department's working on it.
Anybody else on Zoom, Nicole?
Let me, I'm gonna, it looks like our IT person wants to try and test it, so. Administrator, please unmute yourself and speak. Okay, we're still having the same problem, IT. We can't hear you as well. Okay, they're gonna continue to work on the issue. I apologize.
Okay, so if there are no further public comments.
I'd just like to welcome the new members. Congratulations, and you have a job ahead of you, and we're all, we stand behind you 100%. So congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Fran. No further public comment. We're gonna go ahead and, Director Cooper, are there any agenda changes?
Vice Chair Mohammed, there are no agenda changes tonight.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move the consent calendar and make a motion to.
Staff recommends the consent calendar be continued to your next regular meeting on February 27th so that the new commissioners have an opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, and go ahead and take a motion?
Yes, please.
Do I have a motion to move the consent calendar to the next meeting, February 27th?
Yes, I will move that we move the consent calendar to the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
And do I have a second?
I'll start at that.
Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon. Commissioner Shelby Goss.
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devett Mohammed.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we're gonna go ahead and open this up to public hearings. Open up to public hearings.
Thank you, Vice Chair Mohammed. Staff is recommending that the Crawford Way multi-family project design permit be continued to your next Planning Commission meeting. The applicant would like some additional time to review the materials. This is a public hearing, and so the Planning Commission would be appropriate to open the public hearing, accept any testimony that's here tonight, and then close the public hearing and continue it to February 27th.
Take a motion or hear the public hearing first?
You can just open the public hearing and then proceed as recommended by the director.
And then, and then after, afterwards, at your discretion, you can continue it by a vote to the next meeting.
Thank you. So I will go ahead and open up public hearings on the Crawford Way multi-family project design permit. I have speaker cards in front of me. I have Demetria Thomas.
Hello, I'm Demi Tom. Everyone calls me Demi. We live in the house right next door to the proposed. Is that better? Okay, sorry. Anyway, I'm Demi Thomas, and we live, my husband and I live in the house right next door to the proposed project. I had some questions here. I was thinking the developers might have been here, but there's supposed to be a six-foot perimeter fence around the entire property. We have a circular driveway in our home and two other driveways. When we're leaving through the driveway closest to the property, having a six-foot fence right there is going to be a big hazard for us trying to get out of our driveway if we want to turn right onto Crawford. It's a hazard now with the tree that is there. So that's one thing. The surveyors that were there a little while ago, they were measuring the property lines. They left a big mess behind them on the property, and my husband and I went and cleaned everything up after the fact. So if you know who the surveyors are, please ask them to be more careful when they're out doing their job. The other question is, will a fire truck be able to make a full circle within the property if there's only gonna be one way in and out on Crawford Way? And if there's a problem? And will the balconies be facing our property? We're going to lose quite a bit of privacy. And when the fencing goes on their property, will I be able to take my fence down and feel safe? Is it going to be butt up against ours? There's going to be kind of an issue with the property lines, I would assume. So that's another thing to think about. And will there be a manager living on the property site when it's built?
Thirty seconds.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Demi. I have Teresa Abegan.
Hello, I'm Teresa Abada. I live right next door to Demi, so I'm the second house. I have the complex, Demi's house, my house. She's like my family. So anyway, I do appreciate the aesthetics of the project, and I really wish the developer was here with this plan, because we met with him, and the project does look nice, but I have opposition to this project. So it's 100 units on a very small parcel, 4.34 acres. It's just 102 and 3 bedroom units. That means 3, 4, maybe 500 people on 4.34 acres. It's, it's just too many people. I think they call it high density. The only entrance and exit, it's one on Crawford Way, and Demi mentioned fire trucks, but if there's a fire and all these cars are trying to get out and one entrance and the fire department is trying to get in, that just doesn't make sense to me. The amount of traffic on this small section of Crawford Way will increase substantially. The traffic will only go north and south and merge onto James Road or Broadway, also known as Highway 29, and it will just continue to cause further traffic backup through American Canyon, especially during commute times. And this more traffic, I think, will probably lead to more accidents at Crawford Way and the highway, because we already see them. Cars pull out slow, it's a highway, we see many crashes. I just wanted to know if there's any plan for a light, a stoplight in the future there, like there is one in Donaldson Way. And my last concern is parking. 100 units means several hundred cars, and the developer has a garage underneath, but I doubt that all those residents will be using the garages, so I'm concerned about the traffic parked up and down on Crawford Way. I'm sure they'll be using the business parking lots across the street just for their parking. Let's see. So the area that we live in is called Midnight Acres. It's a rural area of American Canyon. We have large lots and a lot of space between our home. We have a lot of backyards and side yard privacy. This high-density project is taking some of that away from us. It appears for those who live on the west side, Crawford Way and James Road, the second story balcony will face right into our backyard. I mean, I saw it on the plan.
Please begin wrapping up. Please begin wrapping up.
Okay, so I want to request that the developer, besides that six-foot fence, put trees along that fence, fast-growing tall trees, maybe 20-foot trees, to protect our privacy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Teresa. Next speaker, Philip Thomas.
Hello, my name is Philip Thomas. Why, if we live next door to the property? I just have a couple of questions about the project. Is this gonna be a market rate project? And is there any affordability component to it? That's one question. The second question is, that I have is, has the developer built any large apartment complexes before? That's a big issue, because I'm in the commercial real estate business, and I've seen a lot of apartment buildings built, and five or 10 years later, they turn into slum properties. That's what I'd have a concern about. And then who will be managing the property? I'd like to know what their management experience is, and I think that's the only questions I had, but I'm more concerned with the experience of the developer in developing large apartment buildings and the property management company that's gonna take, take it over. I'm really concerned that if it's not properly done and not properly managed, it will turn into a slum property, and we don't want a slum property next to our property. That's the only questions I had. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Philip. Leanne?
My name is Leanne Salinas, and I live at the James and Crawford House. My family came to American Canyon in 1960. At that time, we could play out in the streets and come in when the lights came on, and that doesn't exist anymore. You can barely get out of the driveway and cross the street safely. I think there was a plan that was for senior citizens assisted living that was gonna go on that piece of property some time ago. I think that would create employment opportunities for the citizens of American Canyon, which I would be happy to apply for. Apartment buildings is too many already, and we need something more than jobs for fast food, gas stations, and Walmart. I think from, if there was a senior citizens assisted living or something similar that put on that piece of property, there would be employment opportunities for maintenance workers, food workers, healthcare workers, doctors, nurses, et cetera. It would be a really great place to build something like that that could create jobs for American Canyon. And the apartments that would be going in would bring in more people, more crime, way more traffic, and there's too much of that already as, from what I can see. So I would like to consider not doing an apartment complex, so that's, that's. of that size. Something else that would bring more employment opportunities and help create a better environment for all of American Canyon, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Anybody, any other public comments? Nicole, are there any public comments on Zoom?
We have Justin Hall on Zoom again. I'd like to try him. I believe it's a non-agendized item, but since we're taking public comment? Okay. Okay. I apologize, Justin. I've just been advised by our city attorney that we will get back to you after we complete this item. I apologize.
Any other public comments on Zoom regarding the Crawford Way multi-family project design?
There's no one else on Zoom. Thank you.
I will go ahead and close public hearing and I would like to entertain-
I will make a motion that we continue this hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting and go from there.
Do I have a second? Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon?
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davet Mohammed?
Aye.
All righty, moving on to the 285 Napa Junction-
So Vice Chair Mohammed, I think it would be appropriate at this point to return to public comments.
Okay. We will go ahead and return to public comments. Non-agendized items.
All right. Justin, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself now. Hold on. All right, Justin. Okay, Justin, I can see your microphone moving. Can you try speaking up a little bit? Justin, I really apologize. It seems that we're having a lot of technical difficulties at this point. I know IT can hear me in the control room. If you could please take a look at this. Justin, if you'd like to send an email, I will make sure that the commissioners get it. I apologize. I apologize for the technical difficulties, everyone.
Thank you, Nicole. We will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, 285 Napa Junction Citation Appeal. I've consulted with the city- Oh, sorry, we're going to close public comment. Non-agendized items. We're going to move on to the next agenda item. I have consulted with the city attorney's office and due to financial conflicts of interest, I need to recuse myself. And we will have provisional Chair Altman.
I think what should happen is, because of the configuration of Planning Commission, you do have an obligation to recuse yourself. That requires your removal from the dais and preferably exit the hearing room. The next commissioner with the most experience is Commissioner Altman. I think the commission should entertain a motion to confirm Commissioner Altman as the provisional chair for the next madam on the agenda, which is the matter from which you are disqualified. So it would be appropriate for our commission motion to confirm Commissioner Altman as the chair for Agenda Item Number Four because of the required recusal of Vice Chair Mohammed. Someone can make that motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to have interim Chair Altman continue the conversation on Item Number Four, 285 Napa Junction Citation Appeal.
May I second that motion? Nicole, roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Eric Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon? Commissioner Shelby Goss?
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Davet Mohammed?
Aye.
Well, thank you, Planning Commission, members of the public. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director for American Canyon, and here to provide a brief overview for an appeal of a citation at 285 Napa Junction Road. Here's just a vicinity map showing the property at the end of today's Napa Junction Road, the west side. A key issue related to this has to do with the zoning code. I have a segment here from the zoning code that shows that in the medium-density residential zoning district where the property is located, it shows that vehicle storage is not permitted. The code designates that by a dash. If something is permitted, there would be a P. And if it requires a conditional use permit, which is a different form of entitlement, there would be a C. So a dash shows that it's not permitted. And as you can see, it's also not permitted in other residential zoning districts. I have this one RM highlighted in yellow. They received a complaint that there was a food truck stored on the property in around March, toward the end of March of 2022. And as part of our investigation, a photograph was taken from the public right-of-way, which you can see there was a food truck located there, which is a commercial vehicle. Over different times, there was photographs that were taken of the property through April and May of 2022. I have a brief explanation of the code enforcement process. When a property has a code violation, it's natural for residents to not know the code. It's clear and it's expected. And so our code enforcement process is one where the first notification is one just to inform a property owner what the code is, and then it includes a timeframe for when, be reasonable for the code violation to be resolved. We're really interested in resolving code violations and so we're often flexible with the timeframes for it. Everyone has their lives, things to do. There could be also some time to sort of process that whatever is happening on the property doesn't meet with the code. So if there's a timeframe to clarify and correct the violation. If that doesn't happen in the correction period, then we offer a second courtesy notice to remind that there is a violation there and there's a new deadline to correct the violation. And so in the case of this project, there were three notifications and there's no fine for this. It's a request with a deadline. The code enforcement officer spoke to the property owner and the property owner requested a 30-day extension for timeframe, which was granted. And so that pretty much takes us to the beginning of May of 2022. Around that time, the city received a letter from a law firm, Moss and Russo, expressing a concern that the code enforcement had a basis in discrimination. And so at that point, code enforcement ceased, we held it in abeyance, and we forwarded the letter to our city attorney. And so on October of 2023, the city attorney issued a letter saying that there was no evidence of discrimination and the city doesn't support that. The issue had been identified based on the zoning code. And so we continued to wait for compliance up until around the beginning of September of 2024. So that was about 27 months in between for held in abeyance. Unfortunately, compliance didn't happen. And so according to the municipal code, if the courtesy notices aren't successful in involuntary compliance, then the municipal code would call for citations, which unfortunately come with a fine, a progressive fine as each citation continues. And so in, let's see, around the October and November of 2024, there were three citations. Each of them had a two-week compliance date. And it was after the third one that we received an appeal for the citation on the basis of discrimination. So when the planning commission is considering, they're the appeal body for a citation appeal, which is the property owner's right. The municipal code spells out the criteria that the planning commission must use to judge whether or not an appeal is worthy of being upheld or not. And so the municipal code says that the planning commission shall only consider evidence related to whether there was in fact a violation and whether the notice went to the property owner or the person responsible for the property. I think if you're 18 and I think your parents become responsible if you're 18. But if you're the property owner, then you're the responsible person. In the case of the evidence that we have, the person that received the violation is in fact the property owner and the property was storing commercial vehicles, which is inconsistent with the zoning. So from our staff's perspective, a recommendation, there is no basis to support the appeal. I think we're very sensitive to the way in which we work with the community and I think it's all very clear that there is presence of discrimination in our society. And I think we recognize it could certainly feel that way. And so we're very sensitive to that. Nevertheless, the code says what it does and we're obligated under our charge to uphold the municipal code. And so the issue hasn't been resolved and therefore our policies would say that code enforcement must continue. In addition to the letter that we received, there were some additional concerns that weren't specifically related to this code violation, but others elsewhere in the city. It pointed out that there were some sign code violations in their view near their property. And so we have opened up, which is their right to say that anybody has that. And so we've opened up a code enforcement case related to these sign code violations and we're researching and pursuing them. The letter referred to some other concerns, but in our view, we weren't able to discern exactly what those concerns were. But if the property owner would like to clarify those, we're happy to follow up with any other code violations that they may believe exist in the city, which is anybody's right. And then the third issue it raised had to do with food truck processing. And so there weren't any specifics as to what the concern was. And we're always happy to talk to people about any concerns they have, about a project they may have with the city, to kind of work through and resolve concerns. So kind of bringing us to the staff recommendation, we believe the criteria to approve the appeal hasn't been met. And so it would be our recommendation to deny the appeal. But I think in this case, it might be appropriate if the planning commission concurs to provide the planning commission with the opportunity to work with the property owner on a reasonable compliance date. I mean, we're really concerned about compliance. It's kind of our goal. And if that may help resolve the issue, I think that might be kind of a nice way to do it. And in this case, if there is an agreement on a compliance date and the property owner achieves that, I think staff would recommend that the citation fines that have been assessed would be returned to the property owner. Citation fines are really meant to encourage compliance. And at the end of the day, if that happens, it's not about the money, it's about the compliance. And so I think it'd be fair to return the fines. So that concludes my presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for staff from the commissioners? Seeing none? Or do we?
Yeah, me.
Please go ahead.
My question is, was the property owner given a chance to fix the issue before the citation?
Oh, thank you, Youth Commissioner Jawanda. Yes, the property owner was given three courtesy letters. There was telephone communication and a 30-day extension in addition to the time that each of the notifications provided.
Another one of my question is, did the owner provide any evidence to dispute the citation?
We were unable to discern any substantial evidence to support their appeal.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner questions?
Just so I'm clear, the fines that have been collected or have not been collected already?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Plummer. In order to qualify to appeal a citation, it's necessary that the property owner pay the fines. And so the city is holding those funds today. And those are the funds that I would suggest if it is resolved between the property owner and the planning commission, that they be returned to the property owner.
Commissioner Avalon?
I have a clarifying question. How many months have passed from the code violations?
We received the first complaint in March of 2022. And so we are approaching three years in March, so three years minus four months or so, three months.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Another one of my question is, has the owner set up any meetings or communication to talk about the citations?
For this question, I'd like to refer it to our code enforcement officer. She has the firsthand knowledge of communications between her and the property owner. Tiffany, would you mind coming to the podium?
Hi, commissioners. So since issuing the citation-
Tiffany, I'm sorry, can you lean in and speak?
Since issuing the citations, there's been no direct communication to me. That's been through their attorney.
There was one telephone call, I think you had.
But she said since the citations.
Thank you.
Any further questions from commissioners? No. Thank you, code enforcement officer. Thank you, Director Cooper. And I would love to, at this point, hear from the property owner and/or their representation, in legal terms, the appellant.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. You always know with attorneys, they're always going to disagree with the law. I mean, it seems that's what they teach in law school. But I want to make something very, very clear that-
I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I apologize. Daniel Russo. I'm an attorney in Vallejo, been there for almost 50 years. So when you have municipal code or any code enforcement, it can't be used in a discriminatory fashion. Now, the code, the gist of what I just heard was, well, look- well, look, this is black and white. If you did it and you don't remove it, your guilty is charged and that's the end of it. And it can't be because municipal codes can't be used in a discriminatory fashion and it can't violate due process. One would think that the municipal code in this, in American Canyon enshrines due process. And so here's our problem in this case. We don't contest the fact that Mr. Lara, and this is the owner of the property, Michael Lara, and this is William Lara. They both, and their father's here too. They're both established residents of this community for a long time. They have several businesses in this community. They employ 10 people in this community. And so when this issue first arose, I think it's really important to understand that the responsiveness of the hearing officer, and it's not really true that the hearing officer, I think she misspoke. I don't think intentionally. She's had no contact with these folks because she had contact with them at their restaurant where she was complaining to them about signage in the restaurant. And they pointed out to her that all around the restaurant were all these really large signs that were much larger. But to get to the point and not waste all your valuable time, what I had, when, when Mr. Lara first came to me, what I said was, I looked at the code and said, you're violating the code. And Mr. Lara explained to me that there was countless examples of other individuals violating the code. And so what I had him do is take a series of photographs, and I, and I apologize to the commission because I only made two copies, and I should have made enough for everybody, of instant after instant of violations, ongoing continuous violations in his neighborhood. His own property, he has two minor children, Mr. William Lara does, and his property has been blocked by commercial vehicles so many times that he had to transfer his children from the school they were in because he couldn't get there on time. The city's lot, storage lot for commercial vehicles is right next to his property. But it's not uncommon for him to have trucks and vehicles blocking his property. So I, I mean, I'm curious to see who made these complaints. But if the commission is open to seeing the evidence, what I'd like to do is present a series of photographs that reflect the vast amount of commercial vehicles parked in pure residential neighborhoods in the city of American Canyon, right near Mr. Lara and in fact, right behind the police station, right behind City Hall, and have been there for a long time because the, the municipal code says they're only supposed to be there five hours. And we, we have photographs of vehicles that have been there literally for weeks. So when I say it, it's true that Mr. Lara, Mr. Lara has violated the ordinance, what I'm saying is, it appears that he's being singled out. And to the point that he had some other folks from the city come and open the manhole in front of his house. And when he questioned them about why they were doing that, they said, well, we got a complaint that was grease in the sewer lines. And obviously, the implication of that is that he dumped grease from his truck into the sewer lines. And that's, that's a fair thing. Well, there was no evidence of grease and they came three times. So, you know, as someone who is an employer, a taxpayer, and a citizen of American Canyon, it starts to look, even from the most objective viewpoint, as he, he is being specifically singled out and it's impacting his ability to conduct his business and his livelihood and even his enjoyment of his own property. So if you're interested in that, if you feel that's an issue, I can, I can show you these photographs. Because I do, I do think it's clear evidence of discriminatory procedures.
So I'll say this.
Sure.
We are always interested if there is actual evidence of discrimination. We want to know about it. So I would encourage you to please provide the evidence you've got. But I will also follow on with a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
I don't know, and nothing here tells us who or where the initial complaint against Mr. Lara came from.
Right.
What I would ask is, with the evidence you're providing, did Mr. Lara notify code enforcement so that they could then investigate and look at all of the different examples you're mentioning? Because as I understand it, and I will ask the code enforcement officer and Director Cooper and City Attorney Ross to chime in as appropriate, the code enforcement officer doesn't drive around looking for issues and then basically self-report them. Code enforcement receives a call or receives a notice that there is a violation and then goes and investigates. So until someone notifies, nothing happens. And so in this case, I'm operating on an assumption here. I'll tell you that right up front. But that there, someone, and I have no idea who, made a complaint. And if Mr. Lara, it has, and if you've got evidence of other violations, we'd love to know about them because we'd like to get them cleaned up as well. But if he did not register a complaint to code enforcement, we're not going to enforce them.
Well, when we initially took the photographs, and I, if I can respond to you, Commissioner. When we initially took the photographs, we sent them to the city attorney. We sent them to the code enforcement. And, and so the idea, and with all due respect, the idea that you can drive through the city, be right next to City Hall and not see commercial vehicles, one behind the police station, parked there for weeks. I, I mean, I understand that this is a complaint-driven process. I, I do understand that. But that's like saying, well, someone complains they're breaking my window and on the way to driving to seeing my window being broken, there are 40 other houses that was broken windows. I, I just don't think it, it doesn't work that way. I think one of the things that a municipality owes to its citizens is to make sure if they enforce the code, that they enforce it evenly. And so I, I don't know who made the complaint. And honestly, I'd almost invite the commissioners to go out and look at the property because the city has stored right next to his property some maybe 25 commercial vehicles. So I really, it's hard for me to kind of look at that, and God help us all, in common sense and say, well, someone made a complaint about his food truck. So I'll offer you the evidence and you can take it any way you want to. I just want to make my record. You know, and I think the Laras contribute a lot to this community. And I think they do great stuff here. And I think it's unfortunate they have to go through this mill. We're not interested. And I want to, and I appreciate Mr. Cooper's offer. The $800 is meaningless. I mean, it's, it's money and things cost money. But it really is meaningless in terms of what is happening to them. So if I can, I, I can have him identify it or I can simply, I think the photographs are kind of self-evident with the exception of a few of them. So maybe I could have, I could pass out some of the photographs and just, and have them briefly explain. We won't spend a lot of time on it. Yeah. Just tell them what it is. So this, I'm going to, this is mark one.
We're, we're here to hear the appeal. And we need, we need, in order to consider the appeal, we need to have the evidence that we can take a look at and-
So I'm going to have the occupant, not the site T, but the occupant, William Lara, tell us, William, what is photograph one reflect?
Good afternoon. So this right here is, you're looking at the view from, oh, you're looking, sorry. You're looking at the view from my property and where I live. And you can see about, I don't know how many commercial vehicles being stored there. At that time, I'm not sure if it was Martin Bros', Martin Brothers or construction company, or if it's the one that stores the vehicles now, which is Russell Square. They all store their commercial vehicles. You know, at first, you know, when I saw it, of course, I felt, you know, like I'm being discriminated. I said, well, how can, they say we're not allowed to have one food truck here. But you have several commercial vehicles. And then like Mr. Russo was saying, it got to the point where I was being blocked by semi trucks. And a couple of people from the city would say, oh, are you blocked? And I say, yes. And more, more than, I would say, three, four times, people forgot their keys to their Bobcats or however, whatever machine it was. And we'd have to wait. My wife was late to drop off the kids in private, in the school in Napa. So we'd have to, after a year of taking them to school in Napa, we had to take them out because we were late every day, every morning. And I brought it up to the, the guy that was in charge at Martin Brothers. And he was, he was really nice, but the workers, they, they got annoyed about it. And they said, oh, we're working, you know, we're working, doing our job. But it got to the point where we were just late every day.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, can I interrupt for just a second with a, with a question? Or two, which is, do we know the address of this property? And do we know the zoning of this property?
So I'm 285 Napa Junction Road. This is the property right behind, right behind the City Hall. Not, not the vacant one with the, not the one with the house, but the vacant lot where all this vehicle, commercial vehicles are being stored. I would say right across the street from the old Napa Junction Elementary.
Okay.
Let's just stick to describing the photographs so we're not here all night.
Okay.
Okay?
The, just so you understand, the reason I'm asking this question is if we're talking about, and, and I don't know because I don't have the zoning maps memorized within the city. So, so, but, but the issue of course is, is it, is that zone a residential zone? Or is that zone a non-residential zone where commercial parking, commercial vehicle parking may be permissible? I don't have that answer. So, you know, I, but, but that's why I'm asking the question because that becomes part of the issue here. If that is a, in a zone, in area of zoning where commercial parking is legal, then there's no, there's no discrimination, there's no violation and, and so on. So, you know, I don't know. That's why I'm asking for the address and if we know what the zoning is.
Right.
Okay?
More than reasonable there. Okay, so here's the next photograph. Mark two.
There was a house there before.
So let, William, why don't you tell us what's on two?
Two is more commercial vehicles being parked. This time you can see, well, you can see one blocking the road to leave my property. That day, I don't remember, I wish I would have gotten better photos there. You can see, I don't know how many vehicles being stored in the property right across from mine. And a Peterbilt semi truck blocking the road.
Now, let's go on to three. And what does three reflect?
Three is a house, I believe, right behind the 711 on, what is it, Real de, Real de Mar? Real de Mar, a commercial vehicle being parked in front of their house.
Okay. How about four? And let me give them copies of four.
Four is on Holcomb Lane. There are several-
If I can go back to three for a quick moment. And again, I'm ignorant on California vehicle law, so bear with me. We've got a side view and there's no question that this is a work truck that you're showing here. This is a A1 guaranteed. What I can't see and what I don't know is, does that vehicle have a commercial plate, which would make it a commercial vehicle? Or does it have a regular plate? Because it is basically a van and so on. And people can use personal vehicle as a business vehicle without it being a commercial vehicle, correct?
Right, but they can't put a license on the vehicle, so.
Okay.
So we know-
This is, this is why, right, this is, this is why I say, I, I am not an expert on California vehicle law, so.
Okay, now, this is, so we're talking about four. And what is four, William?
Four, you see here a couple of Bobcats and tractors, I believe it looks like, on Holcomb Lane. It's a property probably same size as mine with a few Bobcats being stored.
Okay. And then give me five. Five, we only have one photograph of five?
Yeah.
And what is five?
Five is an international, a semi truck. So it's an international truck, much larger than a food truck, parked in a driveway on, I'm not sure what the street behind Canyon Cafe is, but that road right there.
Okay. And then six? Do we have two copies of that?
Yeah. Yes.
So why don't you tell them what six is?
Six is a Isuzu box truck, commercial vehicle parked in a driveway. I believe it's on the same road by, what is that, the 711?
Okay. Okay, we can go to, all right, and I apologize to the board, but, no, we can, you don't have to give me an order.
Do you want me to go to the taco trucks?
No, no, let's go to this. Tell them what 20 is. What's 20?
20 is another commercial vehicle, commercial truck being parked on the side of a house in the wetlands.
And then this is 13? Tell us what 13 is?
13 is another Isuzu box truck being, and some type of commercial van. I'm not sure what kind it is. It's a commercial vehicle. It's actually three commercial vehicles being parked in front of a house. And as well, it's wetlands area.
Okay. Tell us, what, what number is that? Do we have a number marked on that? Okay, well, let's do the taco trucks.
And this is the one behind the police station.
Okay. Here, well, you got to talk about that.
All right, so right here, it is an Isuzu box truck, right, parked right behind the American Canyon Police Station. It's graffitied and tagged all over it and it's been there for quite a while.
For over a year. It's been in the same position. And as my client said, it's right behind the police station. Okay, and then what's 25?
Napa Junction Street. Napa Junction Road? So this, this one is a, a black taco truck parked and another commercial vehicle. It's a commercial van, but this is a black taco truck parked on a property on, I believe it's called Napa Junction Street.
Let's get. Why don't we talk about, I don't know, I can't even read my own writing on this one. Here, let's go to this one.
So this is another, this looks like a Chevy vehicle, a Chevy commercial vehicle parked in front of a house on- parked in front of a house on, it looks like, I believe, in vintage ranch area.
So, what I'm trying to give the board a flavor of, it literally coffits this city with commercial vehicles in really visible spots. And unlike Mr. Lara's vehicle, which is parked...
I'm sorry, excuse me, sir, could you please talk in the microphone? The, your, what you're saying, we'd like to hear and folks online can't, and the recording wouldn't catch it either.
Okay, and I apologize, I'll try to do that. So, what we're showing is a wide variety of vehicles in, not hidden or concealed, but out in the open and continuous. And so, you can understand, and we have countless examples of vehicles parked, you know, behind, behind the police station, near, near this very building. So, if that was the sum in total, that, it would be problematic, but he's all, Mr. Lara has had contact, he has a business, Canyon, the old Canyon Cafe, which he's changed, and the, this code enforcement officer came to that place and complained about his sign, which in comparison to all the other signs surrounding it, was very small. And that's, I guess, what, that became a complaint and some code enforcement was done. But it, it comes down to, I mean, I can understand, in any of the photographs we got, we gave you, if a neighbor, those are all pure residential neighborhoods, if a neighbor complained and said, hey, this guy's had, or this woman's had a semi in front of my house for a year and a half, but it, I, I know you can't disclose who made the complaint, but it seems that in an area that's filled with commercial vehicles, to single out Mr. Lara, he can, it appears to be a discriminatory purpose. And so, that's what we wanted to bring to your attention. I, I do believe that that's an issue you must consider. I do not agree with Mr. Cooper that the simple violation of a municipal code is not subject to due process, but I just don't accept that. But I guess, you know, maybe the city attorney disagrees with me, I'm sure he does. And unless you have any questions for Michael Lara, who's the owner, or William Lara, who's the occupant, I'll submit it on that.
I think we may have some questions, so let me open it up. I know I've got a couple more that I, I'm interested in, and let me open it up to Commissioners.
My question is, were these pictures taken before or after the citation?
These are during the citation.
Excuse me, could you repeat that, when?
I'm sorry. These photos were taken during the citation.
In other words, at the same time.
Could you be more specific, during?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what was that?
Could you be more specific as to time?
This is...
Well, I could clear it up because I asked for the photographs to be taken. Some were taken the same day as the citation, all three sites, the most recent citations. Some were taken earlier when, when, when it's, when the issue first arose and we submitted some of these photographs earlier.
And some were taken maybe a couple of weeks ago as well.
Another one of my question is, the owner was giving three citation, how come they didn't communicate or resolve the situation?
Well, I can speak to that. I, I called the city. I wrote Mr. Ross and he was more than, I, I think he was responsive to me and wrote a response, but the, as I said, the situation wasn't gonna change. And so, the city's been aware of our position for, since we sent the photographs and that's more than, the first time was more than a year ago.
Thank you.
I actually have a question for a code enforcement officer, if you don't mind. Could you maybe help me understand and clarify code enforcement for private property versus public streets?
So, I don't enforce parking violations on public streets, I enforce on private property.
Can I ask just a follow-up question? If you're done, I apologize.
Just a follow-up question on that. If, if a complaint was filed and, say, a commercial vehicle in this case was on public streets, you would investigate that complaint?
I, I would forward that complaint to PD. Because I often get complaints of vehicles parked on the street and those complaints get forwarded to PD.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to understand the process, thank you.
And just, can I have a question? So, commercial vehicles that are parked in private driveways would be in your domain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I, I have questions about this. I'm not sure who to direct it to though, because I don't think this is an issue just for you. I understand essentially what this comes down to is the city is saying that you violated this code and you're saying that you are being unfairly held to that when a lot of instances, there's no enforcement, right? And that feels unfair. I, I, I'm understanding that correctly, right? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. So, I think from at least my perspective, you know, what we're talking about tonight, like for the commission to decide, is about the appeal itself and that seems very limited in scope and what your, the issue that you're raising seems much broader and I'm wondering what the process would be to address it, because I'm not sure that the appeal process fits specifically, but I, I don't want to dismiss the issue entirely, I just am not sure what the correct avenue would be.
Yeah, and I respect that and, I, I mean, maybe the city attorney wants to chime in, but what I, what I'm trying to say to you, and, and I know there's disagreement here, is that any municipal code has to be imposed with due process. So, you can, so you can raise the issue of due process and unconstitutionality, and I'm not saying that, that it is unconstitutional. What I'm saying is that this individual's due process is being violated because a code is being enforced in a discriminatory fashion. The whole history of civil rights is the, is codes that were made in the South that were enforced, that on its face were completely nondiscriminatory and fair, but were enforced in such a manner. And so, that's, that's what our argument is. But your analysis is correct. From what Mr. Cooper says, this issue can't be raised and I appreciate the board giving that, me that time, but I'm trying to avoid litigation, to be perfectly honest. I'm trying to figure out what is really going on, you know, but I appreciate your comment.
Any additional questions from anyone or are we up to me?
I have a question. Were there any complaints for the neighbor about this situation?
I kinda don't understand that.
Because you said, like, neighbors couldn't complain about this stuff, were there any complaints or no?
Supposedly there was, but no one... He, see, here's the thing that is a little bit distorting. He has no neighbors. If you look at the map, there was one house, but the house was demolished. So, he doesn't really have any neighbors. And, and that leads to a certain amount of cynicism about who made the complaint.
Thank you.
Commissioner Avalon, anything?
Thank you for the photographs, they, they, they tell a lot in this picture.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for giving us the time.
Hang on. I've got, I've got a variety of, of points of clarification and information that I'd like to try and understand here.
Okay.
To, to sort of help me wrap my head around all of this. I, I certainly can appreciate and, and am very concerned with any allegation of discrimination. I also know that the Lara family has contributed to the community and so I'd like to, as an aside, just thank them. I know that they have a tax business and, and I believe that is why our vice chair had to recuse herself, you know, so, and, and you mentioned Canyon Cafe, now the Burial Spot at Canyon Cafe and, and so on, so, you know, from, what I will make clear is certainly from those of us on the commission, there is absolutely no discrimination. We're appreciative of businesses contributing to this community. Now, my couple of points and questions are, I see the pictures, I look at them and this is where I go back to a comment that I believe you made, Mr. Russo, which is, if it's parked for five hours, it's not a violation.
That's right.
It's gotta be for longer than that. And so, the problem that I've got with these pictures is they're one-offs and it's not a picture of the same vehicle in the same spot on two different days, on four different days, whereas we have pictures, for better or worse, of the Lara's taco truck on their property, maybe not in the exact same location, but on their property at different time periods.
And that's completely reasonable, but what I suggested to Mr. Lara was to only photograph vehicles he saw on consecutive days, so that if he saw a, a vehicle parked on one day, he wouldn't photograph it until the next day, so that he at least knew it was 24 hours sitting there, right? So, I, I mean, I, I don't know if that helps, but, you know.
I, I would have preferred him to, to take two photos that would in fact be able to show the time and so on, because you, you get where I'm coming from.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's a reasonable question.
Looking at, at it, it's like, okay, you've got a bunch of pictures and there's no question, there are pictures of commercial vehicles, some of them are on public streets, so that's not a code enforcement issue as we've heard, but some of them are not. Some of them are on driveways, which would be, some of them are in other positions on, on lots and so on. So, there's potentially some things that give credence to the argument that you're making.
Right, I understand.
But, but in, in my estimation, without having that timeline, as I look at this, I can't say that I'm seeing any kind of pattern of discrimination, which is what I would need to be convinced of in order to think of buying into your question before even turning to the city attorney to, you know, inquire as to your points on due process. So, you know, I mean, that, that's where I'm at.
Not to dirty up the issue with common sense, but we could all take a drive right now and see 90% of these vehicles, the ones parked in driveways, that are commercial vehicles. I mean, the, the burden on Mr. Lara has been a lot. You've already heard that as a result of what's been happening, he's had to take his children out of school. So, it's really impacted him and I understand, you know, if this is a criminal case, I'd have to show guilt beyond a reasonable doubt. That's not happening. What we're trying to do is present to the board the appearance, what the appearance is. And the appearance is, is that Mr. Lara's being discriminated against. You may find that he's not, but we're concerned because it impacts his business and his ability to have a livelihood in this city.
Well, I, I hear you and, and completely understand and then, I guess where I'm struggling with some of what you said though is, is, well, actually, I'll come back to this. Let me go to kind of bottom... Sure, please go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, good evening, I'm their father.
Please state your name for the record.
My name is Emilio Lara. We were blessed with the opportunity to move here to American Canyon 21 years ago, back in 2004, and I am extremely proud to be a member of the community. Over the last 21 years, we have several opportunities to move to other cities, but we would never even think about it because we love our city. We are proud of our leaders, we are proud of our American Canyon Police, we are proud of the community and, and we love it here. That's why it really bothers me to see this. No, like you said, this could be one single incident, this could be vehicles parked on the road, no, these are vehicles parked on driveways. We can go and by next week, we can have three different pictures or four different pictures or five different pictures of the same vehicles, no, on different days, and we will have those, okay? Also, what really bothered me the most is that finally, I really believe that my, the city that I love so much, through maybe one person or, or through a fluke or whatever it is, is singling out my kids. It really hurts me, it really bothers me, you know, and I have a perfect example of that. My kids just bought the Canyon Cafe, they, they have now as a, the biggest part of Canyon Cafe, and shortly after they opened, they were doing great, they were, they were told they had to take down their banners because banners were not permitted after so and so. The lady that came in, Ms. Ward, said, it's not my department, but I believe, and she started looking, tried to do some extra digging to see about the banners, and she said they had to take the banners down. They pointed out that right across the street, there's a hotel with six banners, six banners, not one, not two, not three, but six banners, but she said, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here for your one. Right behind his house, the apartments, the new condos apartments, there's a huge, huge banner, as big as a, almost a whole building, that's not the issue either. Right in front of 711, right across the street from 711, the apartment complex, there are two banners, one on each corner, that is not an issue either. Chicken guy, pizza place, so many other banners around the city, that is not the issue either. The issue is your business. Guys, come on. My kids are trying to be good citizens of American Canyon, trying to add to the city, try, try to, to be a business, successful business here, pay taxes, hire people in American Canyon, because we love the city, you know? Just give them a break, help them, give them a chance to be successful. I mean, that's all we want. We want to be a proud member of our city like we've been for the last 21 years. That's all I'm asking for.
Appreciate that and, and just as an FYI, not that it's relevant to anything, I moved here the same year you did.
Oh, awesome.
2004, so, you know, been here just as long and, and have similar feelings in general about the city, love it, it's why I'm involved, it's why I'm on the planning commission, trying to help advance the city in whatever little limited role I may have. So, I thank you, I thank, and again, I thank your kids because they are contributing. What, what you said, they are doing. They have successful businesses, as a family, you have successful businesses in town where you're hiring people in the community. So, from me personally... So from me personally, and from me in whatever limited capacity I have as the interim chair of the Planning Commission at the moment, you know, on behalf of the city, you know, we thank you. We want folks like you in this community. So, you know, the allegations of discrimination are concerning. That's why we want to hear you out. It's also the why, you know, we need to ask questions to understand, to see. And so the bottom line question that I was going to get to really is this. This has been going on for nearly three years. I guess I look at this and I go, so I understand the discrimination, but I don't think the discrimination, you know, and correct me if I'm mistaken here, but I think the discrimination, is that an allegation from the beginning, from the 2022, that it was, the initial complaint was discriminatory? Or is it just that over time, it has become a discriminatory pattern?
No, I think the initial, we believe it was discriminatory. Because at the time that it was made, there was no neighbors.
Okay. What are you looking for as the ultimate resolution? Because you've acknowledged that there is a violation of the code. And my understanding from Director Cooper's presentation, especially his saying, hey, look, we don't care about the fine. It's not, this is not an issue about the money, you know, make that go away. That's not a concern. And you indicated, again, it's all, that's not where the issue is either, right? You know, so it's not that. The issue is, and for me, and I trust my fellow commissioners, the issue is, can we have the truck moved? And why hasn't, in the three years, why hasn't it been moved?
And if I can just explain that briefly.
Please come to, yeah, just so we can get it all on.
Yeah, if I can explain it briefly, it's because he needs to service it. He needs to have it close to his property. He needs not, you know, that it won't be vandalized, that he can have access to it. I just find it, well, I just, if you look at the code section that's cited, the last paragraph talks about, I think, the last paragraph in the code section that's cited. Do you have that before you, I have it.
I'm looking to see where. There's a lot of papers here. Here, I can read it to you, and I'm sure.
Okay, so B of 1032, 10-32-110 says, "No person shall park a commercial vehicle on any street or portion thereof if such parking would, in the opinion of the traffic engineer, interfere with the reasonable and comfortable enjoyment of life or property of any person owning or occupying any nearby residence, apartment building, motel, hotel, or other single or multiple dwelling, and if such street or portion thereof has been posted with signs giving such notice of parking limitation." So at least in theory, and I want, I assume that, given this, the city issue would be satisfied if he parked it on the street in front of his house. And that seems to me kind of to be counterproductive. But maybe that's the solution, that he's just got to park it on the street in front of his house. He certainly could do that. He could do it tonight.
So here's, given that comment, quick follow-on question. I'm assuming, again, assuming, that the taco truck actually operates on a daily basis or almost daily basis as a taco truck, and is out in whatever location or locations during, you know, lunch hour, dinner hour, or whatnot, serving tacos and other food to whomever, so that it's not just an idle object just sitting there.
Right, yeah.
Right.
It's not a homeless shelter.
It is a functioning, you know, mobile food service business.
Yeah, that employs people here in this community. Yeah, I mean, so maybe that, maybe that's the solution.
So. At this point, I'd like to get some comments. Actually, I'm going to hang on one second because I see a question here. So I'd like to have my fellow commissioners fire away.
Going back to my, one of my questions, how long ago were these pictures taken? Because you guys didn't give me the dates or any.
They were taken over a period, well, some were taken in excess of a year ago. Some were taken a couple of weeks ago.
Which one was a year ago?
Can you tell? Here.
A year ago would be, I believe, 12.
And maybe I can show you which one that is. You have a copy.
This taco truck was a couple of weeks ago.
Then this one, which is the taco truck, was taken just a few weeks ago. Okay, let's go.
Which one was the year ago? Is that one that you showed me, right?
Yeah, the first one. And then the taco truck, it's a picture, we had called it number 12, but it has three commercial vehicles actually parked in a driveway. They're not parked on the street.
Thank you.
Commissioner Avalon.
Mr. Lara, I appreciate how you came to the podium to share the work of your children, the work of your family. So thank you. I guess my question is, again, of clarification. You were talking about signs, sir, that there were signs posted outside of your restaurant. Was that another code violation issue that was brought up? I just wanted to clarify.
We were asked to remove the banners, so we had to. And sales dropped by 60% immediately after, until we were able to get the permit for the permanent signs. So we were forced to take the signs down. And what bothered me is that we had to take them down while other businesses were allowed to continue having them displayed.
May I ask another question? Was your sign too big? Was it too small?
One of them was big, but not as big as some others. But the point, again, is that while we were forced to take them down, other businesses were still permitted to have them there, and they're still there right now.
Okay, so in your opinion, sir, you had to remove your sign, but yet there are other neighboring businesses surrounding your restaurant that still had their signs up.
In fact, he registered a complaint about it. And they were never acted on. And so that starts to bleed into whether he feels discriminated against.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Also, that day, I remember because I was opening, Tiffany Ford had driven by, and she had a phone on her. And she was being very, well, in my opinion, discreet, like just taking pictures. And then when I came out, she turned around and I said, I introduced myself. Hi, how you doing? How am I helping you? And she said, oh, hi, are those banners, or do you have permits for those banners? And I said, I'm sorry, do I need permits? And she goes, I'm not sure. That's not my department. And I said, okay, so what should I do? And she said, you can reach out to, I believe, his name is William Hee. And the next day, I believe, we were cited.
Thank you.
Okay, so I was going to ask the city attorney and planning director for input and comments on what they have heard and some guidance at this point.
Chair members of the commission, appellant, I think we, I'd like to comment briefly referencing items in the staff report that confirm communications with the appellants. And I think, you know, Brent wants to supplement from a staff report basis and conduct of staff. But I'd like to go through some things that are frame the issue before you and the kind of evidence that you look at and respond to show. And I'm going to summarize right now. No matter who the city official has been, the city official has investigated the causes for discrimination, requested evidence to support that at the time that it's advanced. Allegations of discrimination are taken very seriously by the city. And likewise, if there's an issue about another code violation, that's teed up, and that's pursued by city staff. I'd like to briefly reference matters in the record before you to set the factual and legal chronology. I think it would be helpful. I think the first thing I'd reference would be my letter of October 13th, 2023, that's addressed to Mr. Russo. It's on page 702 of the record before you. And that responds to a claim of discrimination then. It was investigated by contacting all applicable city officials, and we found no evidence of it. And that's in the context of the letter not providing evidence of specific claims of discrimination. I'd like to next go then to a further communication by Mr. Russo. It's on page 680. It's addressed to me. And curiously, to the law firm of Liebert Cassidy Whitmore as city attorneys. Liebert Cassidy represented the city on a personnel matter. It's now four years ago. So it's unclear, you know, why that address took place. Nonetheless, our office responded to that matter. And that's found, it's on page 718, it's attachment 16, where we set forth the chronology of all the communications that have gone to the appellant in this matter about the violation, including the courtesy letters, which I would respectfully note contained the procedure to offer evidence to refute the claimed violation. The sequence here supports the conduct that I referenced in the initial statement, that the overall effort is, as mentioned in the beginning by Director Cooper, is to seek resolution of the citation. You know, I'm, I know in my conversations with Mr. Russo, I represented that, consistent with what other city officials do, that the fines are irrelevant. The goal is to cure the violation. I, the reason I raise that is there's also a comment there about the sign violation and how that can be pursued. And at that time, when we made the investigation, we concurred with city staff, and representations or claims of violations of other code violations are pursued by city staff. The claim of discrimination, you know, continues. Staff in the, in the staff report, you know, to give the character of the demands of code violation and how they're disposed of, sets forth on page 673, you know, a summary of what occurs in 2024 and how they're acted upon and disposed of by staff. So quite respectfully, you know, what is at issue before the commission is, you know, three citations that were appealed upon. And if you read that, you know, the, our second communication, attachment 16, you know, we allowed additional time for compliance with the appeal procedure to be complied with by the appellants. The contributions of the appellants to the community is not at issue. What is specifically at issue are three citations in the chronology of multiple warnings about the issue. That's, I'm going to say it as a lawyer, clear on its face, but has been advocated by city staff multiple times to the appellants to cure, to just fix it and address it, right? You know, the staff report references a specific provision that's applicable to the appeals. And, you know, as a lawyer, I suppose I have to, you know, reference that. And if you give me a moment, I'm just going to say some things for the record. And I'm also going to enforce what, I'm also going to emphasize what I would say has been a consistent, courteous, respectful, timely, responsive conduct of the code enforcement officer, the, the planning director. I'm going to, I'm going to say that both myself and Ms. Bellardo in communications on this have scrupulously followed that procedure with respect to this particular violation. Is it a long record? Yes, it is. But quite frankly, it reflects the patience of city officials to try to get this violation cured. With respect to these photographs, if you give me a moment, I am going to say the kind of things that a lawyer would say is, you know, and I believe there have been five offered, right? They're relevant to whether the citations are valid. How many of these have been reported to code enforcement at the time of the violation? Were they, where the pictures were taken? Did they confirm the zoning related to each of the properties contiguous to where the pictures were taken? And there would be an obligation on an appellate in this situation to confirm that there's no conditional use permit or variance, minor modification, or major modification that would authorize the vehicles that are portrayed in those photographs to be at the locations that they are. All right, that last segment is what the city attorney has to do for the record here. But I really want to go back and emphasize what's in the record is that the continual effort of staff is to get satisfaction of the citation, to get this cured. And again, the monetary amounts are irrelevant. The goals, you know, the, the goal is to achieve compliance. The structure before you tonight is to make two findings first, about whether a violation occurred. Two, to instruct staff about the basis that support your decision about those violations existing, and to communicate that to the appellants, right? I think staff's made very clear that if there is a commitment for curing the violations that the appellants want to make, that can be included as a condition in the communication as Director Cooper has referred to. So that's the city attorney input on this matter. Please respectfully note that I referenced just a portion of what would be known as the administrative record before you with attachment references and specific citations to the pages. So I would, I would yield to Director Cooper.
So noted and appreciated. The one inquiry that I've still got is, we heard a suggestion, and I have no idea whether it serves as the cure that you're talking about. If the taco truck. If the taco truck is parked on the street in front of the home, is that a cure?
You know, legally, I don't know the answer to that now. I would, I would think there would be an issue that would trigger a parking violation, right? But I will certainly look into that.
Thank you. Director.
All right. Well, I can, I can provide maybe a less technical, certainly less legal perspective. I think we're all, we're, we're very sensitive and we understand where you're coming from and how code enforcement actions could be perceived the way they are. I did make a point in the staff report of mentioning, there are hundreds of code enforcement cases that are opened and closed in the course of a year. And we have one code enforcement officer. And so, in the city, at any given time, there are a lot of code enforcement violations. But because there's only one person, the, the actions are focused largely on complaint based. And when somebody complains, there's an obligation to follow up. And if anybody has their right to file a complaint, and, and we'll do our best to, to follow up with the limited resources we have. So, thank you for sharing the photographs of, of other trucks around town, and we will follow up on those. But the reality of the matter in American Canyon is we'll never be able to enforce all code violations everywhere because of just the limited resources. So, when there is a complaint and when there is a violation on a property, we're obligated to inform the property owner and seek compliance. And we're, then we're on to the next case. There's, because there are so many that are, that are addressed in any given year. But I just think because of the reality of the matter, I, I can certainly understand why you feel the way you do. So, and I think it was a healthy conversation tonight. I think it's always, we can always do things better. And I think you've helped elevate your concern. And certainly I will be reflecting on it as well. And the extent that we can improve our procedures and, and our reasons and, and explanations, whatever the case may be to help resolve the issue, I'm certainly committed to, to thinking that through. So, and we certainly, and, and there's no question in our minds, and I speak for Tiffany and as well as our public works director and all of us here at staff, we, we very much appreciate the good work that you do for the city. And we know you're, you're good people and we wish we didn't have to have the conversation tonight. And so, that's, I guess, as much as I can say for now.
If, just briefly respond and then done. I, I don't have the benefit of having that report that's referred to. And I believe that's a city document and I wouldn't receive a copy. So, I can't really respond to that. But what I can respond to is Mr. Cooper saying there's only one code enforcement officer. And ironically, that code enforcement officer had time to, to warn, to, to at least threaten a citation on the banners. So, you can understand, a reasonable person might think we're being isolated. And I, I'd submit on that.
Understood. So, I want to, I want to come to a question that I've got for Director Cooper at this point because I've asked my question of the city attorney in looking for potential resolution after hearing from the appellate, the Laras, regarding why they continue to park the taco truck in violation, which is they need to service it, they need to maintain it. If parking it on the street is not an option, and the city attorney said he would look into that, is there an option via? I know that, that the zoning presently, no go, is a modification to the zoning, something that can be requested or so on by the appellate in this case and considered for the specific circumstances, given that presently there is no neighbor, there is nothing, you know, there in the immediate surrounding area?
I, I think, Chair Altman, what you're referring to would be a, an entitlement of a sort to park a food truck on a residential property. At the moment, I'm not aware that there is any home occupation permit, mobile service vendor permit, design permit. There's no specific authorization for a food truck at that address. And therefore, conclusion is it's being stored because there's, there isn't one. So, but perhaps there, there could be some other avenue. I can't tell you without having checked the code because I could be wrong. But there may be, there may be an avenue we can pursue or look for that might legitimize in a sense, the, the truck being at that location.
Yeah.
And if that's a, if that's something that the commission would like staff to look into, we, we wouldn't be able to resolve that tonight, but perhaps at a subsequent meeting, we had a chance to review what is possible and then talk to the Laras and see what might be acceptable to them.
And that seems really fair and equitable in my mind, you know? And, you know, sometimes lawyers make things worse.
Only sometimes.
You got to talk to my mom.
I, I apologize.
No, don't apologize. Don't apologize. Don't apologize. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Chair. From, from city attorney perspective, since we're going to look into this perspective, I'm not going to call it a remedy, but alternative, I think the, our recommendation be continued to the next hearing so that we could provide that.
Correct. Yes, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at. But I first do, youth commissioner Juanda does have a question or comment, then I don't want to ignore her, so please go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for answering my question and coming here tonight. So, as I was reading the violation letters, I came across for this violation on attachment 13 on September 18th, 2024. It says that all unpermitted uses at your property, and it says on the bottom of the paper in highlighted in yellow, avoid a minimum fine of $100. This could have been avoided. And do you have any opinions why wasn't this avoided at that moment? My question is, there was this violation that was sent on September 18th, 2024. It says requesting that you cease and dis- send from all unpermitted uses at your property. And on the bottom on attachment 13, it says avoid a minimum fine of $100. Why wasn't this?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Russo, you'll need to speak into the microphone.
And, and I'm going to help you a little bit, but here, I, I think the answer to the inquiry, and we're about to get it confirmed, I believe, but is because they believe that there is discrimination, therefore, they have not complied, period. So, the fine is immaterial.
So, I, I guess you're going to law school.
Yeah, that's exactly it. That's a very accurate and more succinct than I could offer.
The advantage of not being an attorney. I can be succinct.
Yeah, okay.
No, thank you. Okay. So, at this point, I think we're ready to see if there's any motions.
I'd like to make a motion. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for continuance on item number four, 285 Napa Junction citation appeal until we can get further options for resolution from staff and city attorney to, to propose some additional options that might be available to the appellates to make a, a better decision for this commission.
Do we have a second? And do we also have a continuance timeframe? Do we want to continue? And I'm asking staff for their input on this. Do we want to continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting? Or do we want to kind of keep it open at this point and just continue it to the future?
Yeah, Chair Altman, I would recommend we continue to the next meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully we'll have a resolution. But if not, it's on the agenda.
Perfect.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to second your motion, that we can do the continuance to February 27th meeting.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please, Nicole?
Yes. Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Abelon.
Aye.
Commissioners Shelby Cos.
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Devette Muhammad has recused herself from this item for the record.
All right. I'd like to thank everyone.
I'd like to thank you folks, thank the city attorney and Mr. Cooper for their patience. Like, because I.
Yes. Not, not on this. Yeah. Yeah, this, this is.
Chair Altman.
I'd recommend you take public comment.
Yeah? Okay. Ben, I'm getting overruled, but, so, public comment, open, please.
Good evening, Beth Marcus. I'm not here to say, I don't know what the rules are, citations or whatever, but I do want to thank the Laras for everything they do here in, in the city. This just surprises me because I know where your house is at. I'm at the old Napa Junction School all the time for Kiwanos and doing everything. I've never seen the truck there, to be honest with you. I'm not saying it's never there or whatever, but I've never really seen it there. And then I had a question about the sign ordinance. Way back in, I think it's like 15 years ago when I was chairman of the chamber, we had a sign ordinance that was put together. I'm not sure if it's the same ordinance that's in process today or not, but it was my understanding when a business came into town and they were applying for a business license, they received a copy of that sign ordinance and all the ordinances. So, that's, could have been something that might have been provided to them or may not have been provided to them, I don't know. But anyhow, thank you for all that you do.
Okay. So, I also would like to take a quick moment and, because I think it's a thankless position, and give recognition and appreciation to our code enforcement officer because it's, you're, you're single-handed, it's a tough job, there are a ton of issues for you to take a look at. And speaking for myself, and I believe my fellow commissioners, we believe that you do things in a fair and equitable fashion. And so, we appreciate your efforts. So, thank you. And now we need to get our chair back so we can continue our meeting.
Need to close public comment first.
Because, oh, yes, let me close public comment. And now let me go get the vice, vice chair back so we can continue our meeting.
Should be recess for five minutes?
Yeah, that's not a bad idea. Why don't we just do a five-minute recess and then we'll be back? Thank you.
Are we ready to resume?
We are ready. So next agenda item? Item five, selection of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair for 2025.
So can I make a motion to appoint a chair?
Let's start with chair.
For the 2025 year? And if so, I would love to appoint our current vice chair, Ms. Devette Muhammad, because I think she's doing a fantastic job. And if, and he's in, but he's in agreement, we need a second on that.
I, I will happily second that.
Can we have a motion, please?
Yes.
Or, sorry, roll call, Nicole.
Yes. Commissioner Eric Altman.
I made the motion. Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon.
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss.
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer.
Aye.
Vice Chair Devette Muhammad.
Aye. Thank you very much. Commissioner Avalon?
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Eric Altman as our vice chair.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Charlie Plummer as our vice chair.
I'll second the nomination of Charles Plummer as vice chair. I have been chair and vice chair long enough.
I didn't know that, but wonderful.
Can I get a?
But I do appreciate the sentiment. Commissioner Avalon.
Roll call, please.
Okay, actually, we need a, a motion and a second for Charles Plummer.
I, I'm gonna make the motion to second Charlie Plummer as our vice chair.
Excellent.
All right. Commissioner Eric Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Marilyn Avalon.
Aye.
Commissioner Shelby Goss.
Aye.
Commissioner Charles Plummer.
Thank you. Aye.
Vice Chair Devette Muhammad.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
With that, can we move on to management and staff oral reports?
All right.
Director Cooper?
Thank you, Chair Muhammad. I don't have too much to report to you today. We don't have any new discretionary projects, but we're working very hard on moving forward with construction projects. So on Oak Hill Apartments, the lower tier, we call Parcel B. We have a meeting scheduled and we've been working with the applicant on processes for occupancy. So they're, they're coming to the home stretch on, on building those apartment buildings. And we're working with them to iron out things so that we have a smooth transition into occupancy for them. So it's coming up. And on the home to suites, it's, the project has struggled over the years. And so we're going to be more actively working with them to schedule and stage the construction to make sure that it's, everything is done in the proper sequence, to get it completed. I did note on the website that they're taking reservations in September. So if you're looking for, you know, like a date weekend, but don't want to travel very far, that would be an ideal place to be. The Chicken Guy Restaurant, of course, we all know they're open for business. They have a few things to finish up with their roof screening and solar. They have two different contractors. And so we are going to meet on Monday to facilitate better communication between them so that the solar panels don't interfere with the mechanical equipment screening and vice versa. I think we can do this. And, and then it'll get finished and we'll be on to the next thing.
If you need a hand from a bond guy, I'm happy to help.
We might. Let's see, we do have a, a application, the Promontory Subdivision. This was approved, oh gosh, I think last spring, by the Planning Commission and City Council. This is the Newell family's part of Watson Ranch. And they have a modification to, their request is to remove a connection between their neighborhood and the Vine Trail. There's some great issues there. I think we'll be able to find a solution where that connection be, can be kept. Because the Vine Trail is just a, you know, what an amazing, wonderful facility. And it would be a shame if the folks that live there and probably can look at it couldn't reach it. So we're gonna, I think, pretty optimistic we'll find a solution where it, it can be retained. But we are working with them on final maps and construction and, and so on. The general plan update. We have completed the public review for the environmental impact report at the end of December. Our consultants are working on responding to all the comments. They will all be answered and responded before it comes to you. And then also, there is some zone changes, some minor zone changes that we'll be pairing up with the general plan so that it all gets taken care of in one, one spot. It's looking like we might be able, I'm optimistic, and hopefully, we'll be able to bring this to you with the general plan and the environmental impact report in April. So it's coming up. Only a couple of meetings away. So that'll be a nice milestone to, to complete. And then we can take that and build on it with the next thing we want to do. So anyway, that's my update for you tonight.
Thank you, Director Cooper. And with that, do we have any commissioner items? Commissioner Altman?
I've got a couple of different things. Good stuff. We have talked and, and I, one, I want to extend a personal thanks to our city council member for being here, because it is not all that often that city council members come to planning commission meetings. And I think it is very valuable and it is noted and appreciated that a new council member is here. With that, I'm going to also bring up an issue near and dear to my heart that our new chair is well aware of and that we discussed last year in a joint meeting between the Planning Commission and City Council. And I understand there's new members on both. But I'm a firm believer that the Planning Commission and City Council need to meet periodically, certainly at least once a year, so that we can be sure that we are on the same page. And so with this commissioner item, I am publicly asking and requesting that staff work with city council so that we can establish in the not-too-distant future a joint meeting so that we can get together and make sure that we are on the same page. Because as I've pointed out in the past, there have been cases where we clearly were not. And it just doesn't feel good and it doesn't look good to anyone. So. That's my big commissioner.
I will convey the message.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Altman. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 8:50. Good night, American Canyon.